Starting with the agenda portion of the meeting. We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. An ordinance to provide, number one, an order to provide and supplement the funding of various park improvements. Buying in the city of New Brunswick in the county of Littlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated $371,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $353,000, bonds or notes to finance parks cost thereof.
Mr. Council President, if I could continue if I could be heard. All of your ordinances on second reading have to be carried to your next meeting, the April 4th meeting, because of the notice of publication advertising.
Thank you.
Because we had this note emergency and the meeting is canceled. So when we get to these ordinances on second reading, I'm going to ask the council to read a motion to carry it until April 4th.
Thank you. We have two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 10-16210, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas, reference to Lewis Street. Three, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 10-16210, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas, reference to Central Avenue. We have four, table at request of administration. Five, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 5 Business Licenses Regulations, Chapter 5-58 Rent Control, add new section, 5-80-095, require landlords to provide for written receipts for rents and other payments paid in cash or by money order. Six, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders, the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10-16, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Lewis Street. Seven, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section 10-16050, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, Section 10-16020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to College Avenue. And we have one ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to, one, an order to amend and cede municipal budget appropriations limits and establish a cap rank. Then we have resolutions, one, approve agenda amendments, two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refunds redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve resolution authorizing acceptance of execution of arts grant agreement with County of Littlesex Office of Culture and Heritage for art at City Hall amount to receive $1,900. Five, approve request for use of city sidewalk. Requested the chief of UNICEF, location sidewalk from George Street Plaza Douglas Street Student Center to College Avenue Student Center for water walk to educate all about the 663 billion people worldwide who lack access to clean water. Date Saturday, March 24, 2018, time 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. down pro ton. Six, pulled at request of administration. Seven, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Recreation. Location Bugle Park Pavilion Playground Area for Easter egg hunt with the Easter Bunny. Rain date, excuse me, Saturday, March 31, 2018, rain date, Saturday, April 7, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Eight, request for street closing, request about Harvest Moon Cafe Brewery Co. sponsored with New Brunswick City Market. Location George Street between Albany Street and Turf Street for Spring Street Cash Fest, celebrating craft beers and promoting the downtown city center, Saturday, April 14, 2018, time 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., police extra duty. Nine, approve request for use of city property requested by Alpha Gamma Delta, location Bugle Park Field 2 for charity soccer games using inflatable ball. Date Saturday, April 21, 2018, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Rain date Friday, April 20, 2018, rain date 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Ten, approve request for city property requested by Alpha Gamma Delta, location Bugle Field 2 for celebration and founders day and international reunion day for Sunday, April 22, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Eleven, approve appointment council for Lawrence Bitterman for representation of police officer Philip Swindell in a matter of Michael Young versus the city of New Brunswick at all, not to exceed $10,000. Twelve, approve request for city property requested by Delta Gamma, location Bugle Park Field 2 for hosting annual anger games to raise money for service for site. Date Sunday, April 29, 2018, time 1:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Thirteen, request for use of city property requested by Elijah's Promise, location George Castle Park for monthly Mercado Esperanza Market. Dates Sundays, April 22, 2018, all the way through October 14, 2018. April dates correspond to the clopseiclavia and cortezal antonio festival, time 10:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Fourteen, approve request for street closing use of city property requested by Better Choice Empowerment Center, a center for nonprofit corporation A-B-C-E-C for charity motorcycle ride to raise funds to help families in New Brunswick and nearby towns. Location Recreation Park, street closing departure from Recreation Park to end at Hamplin Club on Edifice Road, Saturday, June 2, 2018, party was 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Street closed 1:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Fifteen, approve request for use of city property requested by Central Levee to bring to New Brunswick. Location Recreation Park for the annual health fair and fitness challenge, Saturday, June 9, 2018, time 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Sixteen, approve request for city property requested by Puja Cartuallo. Location Bugle Park for the picnic celebration for family and friends of the day after her wedding. Date Saturday, June 23, 2018, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Seventeen, city of New Brunswick, 2018, New Brunswick Municipal Budget Introduction, Tuesday, March 27, 2018, public hearing, May 2, 2018. Eighteen, approve request for city property requested by Crush Volleyball, location Bugle Park Outfield behind the fields, grass volleyball field. Dates Saturdays, April 28 through June 3, 2018. Rain date Saturday, August 18, 2018, time 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Nineteen, approve transfer of appropriation reserves from 2017 municipal budget. Twenty, approve emergency temporary appropriation for 2018. Twenty-one, approve to accept offer to purchase city property for permanent easements. Block 242, Lot 10-03, for New Jersey Transit with county and yard improvements projected, located at 400 Jersey Avenue, amount of $727,000. Twenty-two, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by the Sheppard, New Brunswick. Location sidewalk beginning at 57 Lexington Avenue, George Street to French Street ending at War Monument Park on French Street. March to support New Jersey legislators passage of driver's license for all build. Saturday, March 24, 2018, time 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. down pro ton. Twenty-three, approve award contract with Raritan Supply Company for furnished and delivered repair plants and accessories towards the border utility. Terms 12-month period commencing in March 28, 2018. Specification number 664-18W, not to exceed $80,000. Twenty-four, authorize submission of recycling enhancements grant. Littlesex County Division of Solid Waste, reusable tote bags to residents of multifamily dwellings, amount of $8,000. Twenty-five, award of contract, ETW Holdings, three corporation doing business as Equo Equo. Border Technologies, maintenance and support for the Memcor membrane filtration systems for the border utility. Term 12-month period commencing in March 28, 2018, and ending March 27, 2019. Rebid specification number 660-18R, RFP, not to exceed $29,200. Twenty-six, approve amendment of resolution R-121-745, reason to pay outstanding invoices in amount of $19,000 with Allied Oil Company Incorporated for furnished and delivered diesel fuel for Department of Public Works. 12-month period commencing April 6, 2017, and ending April 5, 2018. Specification number 58617P, not to exceed $19,000. Approve this change will constitute an increase in the 20% of more of the original contract. Twenty-seven, approve award of contracts for furnished and delivery trees for spring tree planting program for Parks Department with Barbado Nursery Corporation. Items BFG, HK, NOP, TW, not to exceed $16,000 with Chickers Nursery. Item CE, IRS, UNV, not to exceed $6,560. Ocean Hostel Nursery, items AD and J, not to exceed $1,913, specification number 666-18P. Twenty-eight, approve amendment of resolution to pay the final invoices in the amount of $220.50 for the mayor's office G Capital Information Tech Solutions doing business as Rico USA Incorporated, not to exceed $220.50. Approve of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original amount of contract. Twenty-nine, approve relaxation of city noise orders and road closure requested by Sky High Erectors Equipment Incorporated. Reason to place a crane on Somerset Street to lift equipment to the roof of One Robert Wood Johnson Place. Saturday, April 7, 2018, alternate dates, Saturdays, April 14 and 21, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thirty, approve amendment of resolution R-121-731 with traffic lines incorporated for traffic line strapping, specification number 91317, amount of $4,505.49. Approve this change will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Thirty-one, authorize the lease of coping machine for municipal court for Rico Incorporated for one Rico motto M-P055 PG copier system, not to exceed $160,073 per month commencing May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30, 2022. 48-month contract, state contract 40467-G2075 copiers, maintenance and supplies. Thirty-two, approve resolution authorizing certification compliance with United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission for enforcement guidance on consideration of arrest and conviction of employment decisions under Title 7 of the Civil Rights Act. Thirty-three, requested by Sky High Erectors Equipment Incorporated, reason to place a crane to lift the equipment to roof of One Johnson and Johnson Plaza, dates April 7, 2018, alternate dates, Saturdays, April 14, 2018, and April 21, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We have thirty-four, approve amendment of resolution R-021876, reason to add new dates approved relaxation of city noise ordinance. Requested by Souter, crane rental, reason to place a crane on New Street to lift the equipment to the blasting building of 33 Livingston Avenue. Sunday, March 25, 2018, alternate dates, April 8, 2018, to April 15, 2018, time 2:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. non pro ton. We have items for discussion by councils and so on and so forth. This meeting will now come to an end, but the clerk, please.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan is absent. Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied with the annual notice we gave sufficient notice of the time and place of conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filled with by the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board, and lobby of City Hall. New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to the official newspaper to send to New Brunswick, named it Home News. Please rise for the pleasure of meeting.
My pleasure, gentlemen, to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment, signs for those who have lost their lives in senseless violence surrounding this country and around the world, and those that are defending their life, giving their life in defense of freedom, and those that continue to defend freedom around the world. Thank you. All right, we have only minutes. So we'll go to any correspondence by clerk.
A letter from PSEG providing notification that an existing classification exception area, well restriction area for groundwater is intended to be revised, updated for the remediation of contaminated sites. A letter from Amick Foster Wheeler on behalf of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital with the analytical results from the sub slab soil gas and indoor air sampling performed at 100 Kirkpatrick Street on January 23, 2018. A letter from DM Beckus Construction Services, Inc., requesting a final inspection and escrow for the minor site work done at 278 Comstock Street. An invoice from Suburban Consulting Engineers, Inc., regarding professional services for the period of February 3, 2018, to March 2, 2018. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
That's it, thank you.
All right, now we have ordinances on second reading. Read it, did it entertain you?
Yes, we entered a motion to carry it.
Okay, all right. We have number, uh, ordinance number one, fine orders providing the funding of various improvements, the city of New Brunswick, county of Littlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated $371,000. Therefore authorizing the issuances not to exceed $353,000, bonds or notes to finance the courts, but a cost thereof. We have a motion to carry it to April 4th.
Move the ordinance on April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Now we have number two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 10-16210, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas, reference to Lewis Street.
And the ordinance setting down April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
We have three, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 10-16210, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas, reference to Central Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
We have four.
That's it.
Can we table it? Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
And five, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick. Title 5 Business License Regulations, Chapter 5-0 Rent Control, add new section, 5-80-095, require landlords to provide for written receipts for rents, other payments paid in cash or by money order.
Move the ordinance setting down April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, six, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick. Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10-16020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Lewis Street.
Move the ordinance setting down April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
We have seven, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick. Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing, Parking, Section 10-16050, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, Section 10-16020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to College Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
And we have ordinances on first reading, in order to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and establish a cap rank.
Move the ordinance setting down April 4th, 6:30 p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, that's the, 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 now we have resolutions, one through 34. And anyone from the public would like to speak on the ordinances, specifically the ordinances.
Number six or 44 is being pulled.
Yes, six and 44 are being pulled.
Six is being pulled because the applicant never provided insurance before the weekend event. Of course, we're going to approve it non pro ton. Since they did not provide insurance, return phone calls or emails, we are allowed to hold them on the agenda.
Thank you.
And if you have the, if you have the desire for me to speak about the budget that we're introducing tonight, I would do that. It's a $94.5 million spending plan. It assumes that the combined tax rate between local government purposes and the minimum library tax will go up 4.87 cents. We believe that it will affect the average homeowner by $115. I think we saw a statement from the mayor describing the many things that he would like to see accomplished in this budget, an awful lot of parks improvements and street repavings and water main replacements, some work on public libraries, some work on this building. We'll open Buckle Mansion, it'll been fully restored in early May of this year. The budget, as I said to you privately, assumes 12 new police officers this year, five new firefighters. All of our traditional programs and services will be fully funded.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else from the public on the resolutions? So give your name and address for the record, please.
John Walker, 1337 Harlem Court, New Brunswick, New Jersey. My question is to Resolution 031-849, approval of employment of council. Name is Lawrence Bitterman for the representation of police officer Phil Swindle in a matter of Michael Young versus the city of New Brunswick. My question is, what is the nature of the allegation?
Well, it's pending litigation. The city was sued in connection with assault apparently that occurred somewhere outside of the Old Bay Restaurant several years ago, a few years ago, I should say. Officer Swindle was one of the officers involved. Plaintiff alleges various violations of law as to his arrest and charging of a crime. Old Bay's being sued as well in the matter. Having said that, I think I've given the gentleman what's publicly out there in the complaints, then you Littlesex County's, you're...
Resolution 031-855, the city of New Brunswick, 2018 municipal budget. Do you know if there's any room for body cameras?
The budget does not contemplate body cameras. The police department did not make that request in this budget here.
Okay. Would you say that the police department, they would like body cameras to be part of the...
I would have to refer your question to Captain Miller if he wants to take that on.
Okay. Um, do you think that it will be, do you think that you would like to have body cameras within the police department in New Brunswick?
We would like to have them, but we're not prepared to take them on at this time.
Okay. Um, the last question is, do you think it's more feasible to have 12 more officers rather than more body cameras to prevent more assaults and more lawsuits happening within the city of New Brunswick?
Say it one more time.
Do you think it would be better to have more body cameras rather than 12 new police officers that can help Captain?
Yes.
All right, there we go. Sorry, I apologize. Do you think it'd be better to have the body cameras rather than hiring 12 new police officers in the municipal budget?
I think that's speculation, but Captain Miller, if you want, you think it's more feasible to have...
That's purely speculation, that an open-ended budget like that doesn't warrant answering.
That's fair, all right, thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Resolution, second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
All right, now we go to the, 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 items for discussion by council, then we'll go to public, yeah, public hearing. I just wanted to point out a few things. Student representatives from Paul Robinson Community School and New Brunswick High School participated in National History Day contest at Seton Hall University on March 17, 2018. For purpose, the competition was conflict and compromise. Our middle school students compared exhibits such as the atomic bomb, Afghanistan child labor law, North Vietnam versus South Vietnam, and our New Brunswick high school students collaborated in development of documentary titled From Minority to Majority, Fight, Flight, and Black Flight, New Brunswick, New Jersey. We're extremely proud of our students for participating, extremely proud to present our high school students have now won the regional competition will advance to the state competition in May. We have several New Brunswick students mentioned here, but we'll just give them a hand. Also, yesterday was the passing of Linda Brown, who was, she was a plaintiff in Brown versus Board of Education, which desegregated schools throughout the nation. And I just wanted to just commemorate that day because that was something that really changed the nation. Because without Brown versus Board of Education, it probably would have been a civil rights movement the way we knew it, and then it set off a tone, you know, the gross parts and everything else. But that was a name that passed through, you know, people didn't realize she died yesterday at the age of 76, and that was a monumental event. So I just wanted to commemorate that also. Anybody else?
I wish everybody a happy Passover and Easter that's coming up. And I want to publicly thank Dan Clark's office, who's, I understand, retiring, so we wish him all the best.
I just, and, no.
He seemed a bit upset.
All right, anybody else? All right, we have, okay, I'm sorry.
I have to congratulate the New Brunswick Library, you know, in order for the diversity of the progress.
Good, now we have anybody from the public? Please step forward, take your name and address.
Hi, my name Julia. I live to $7,000 in New Brunswick. Varios personas en nuestra comunidad trabajan mucho y tienen que pagar alto costo para la renta.
Many people in our community are working very hard and they have to pay a lot of money for their rent.
Necesitamos que nuestros pagos sean documentados, recibir recibos para la renta. Pueden lograr los siguientes.
We need some sort of record of the payments that were made for rent. If there were a requirement for rent receipts, that would achieve the following.
Que el dueño no reclamen que no sea se hizo un pago aunque inquilino si pagó, que el dueño no tenga la casa sin informar al inquilino y aún siga cobrando la renta.
In the first place, it would prevent that a landlord claims that the rent had not been received when in fact it had been paid. In the second place, it would prevent that a house is sold without the landlord informing the tenant that the house had been sold and the old landlord continuing to collect the rent.
Que la renta no suba más de un 25% los recibos establece la cantidad que se pagará y está fija el aumento próximo legal.
Also, the rent receipts would help ensure that landlords are not raising the rent more than 2.5% in rent controlled properties, which is the maximum allowable increase.
Pedimos por un tanto que la ciudad de New Brunswick apruebe una nueva política para que el dueño den recibos por la renta, muchas gracias.
Therefore, we ask the city of New Brunswick for a new requirement that landlords give rent receipts. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a petition with some, what, 175, I think it is signatures to present for your consideration.
You know that, you know that's the one that we have on second reading for next week?
For next week?
Yes. Yeah, it would have been tonight, but, you know, we have a pleasure of it. Okay, perfect, appreciate that. Yeah. All right, anybody else from the public?
All right, anybody else from the public?
Statement, you again?
Yes.
John Walker, 1337 Frontwood Court, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Why did it take several hours for residents to be notified of the water problem in Rutgers
Yeah, well, there was an accident that occurred. We're in the process of replacing several hundred feet of water main out in the Rutgers Village area during the process of the construction. There was a construction accident that occurred, actually a valve came dislodged. We were immediately dispatched to the area where we isolated the water main break. We were out flushing the system until, I think it was approximately 10 o'clock that night. We didn't make as much notification door to door, knocking on doors, as people were going, as we were going by and dealing with the issues, and then, of course, we answered any calls and response to anybody that had any laundry or anything damaged with that. So I don't know if it was a delay in getting out the information, but, you know, we were on site, we were on site actually when the accident occurred. So, but I think the most important thing to realize is that the water was caused by older pipes, that that's where the brown water was coming from, from rusty pipes, and city is making an effort to replace that pipe with new pipe that has a cement lining on the inside.
Is there anything in the new budget that's for, that will help replace new pipes for the upcoming year?
Yes. There's, the water utility has asked for $6 million worth of capital improvement funding, and I think they intend to replace water mains in six or seven different areas.
Council President Fleming, do you have a response to being found guilty of ethics violation regarding your failure to disclose your income sources? First of all, that was a, that was a misnomer, because there was no finding, there was a, there was a, what they said, there was an admonishment, and it wasn't even that, it was an encouragement. Now, whatever print, paper printed, which he copied from New Brunswick today, because he wasn't there, so that was complete, that's a, that's a complete fabrication. So regarding an article that I read online, Central Jersey, that could have been? That was, yeah, that was written by somebody who wasn't here, who forwarded it from another newspaper. Okay. Yeah. So you did not feel to disclose income sources on past financial disclosure reports? No, it was a, it was a miscommunication on paperwork. Okay. In which we explained in active meeting. Okay, right, thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.